I call the meeting of the Amherst City Council's order on September 28, 2015, at 7:30 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Bukavak?
Here.
Mr. Goodell. Mr. Van Churen.
Here.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Here.
Mr. Winarsky.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Janik.
Here.
Mr. Goodell and Mr. Dietrich are absent. They have letters on file. Mr. Winarsky?
I'd like to ask that we excuse both Mr. Dietrich and Mr. Goodell this evening.
Mr. Van Churen.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Goodell and Mr. Dietrich. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion is carried six to zero. If you will please stand with me for the prayer and then we will have the chap, Sergeant Arms Bukavak lead the pledge to the flag. Would you bow with me, please? "Gracious God, bless this meeting tonight. Hear our voice of thanks for this warm fall evening. Hear our plea for the gift of understanding. Hear our silent thoughts and guide them to charity and empathy to others, and bless us all. And now may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, our rock and our redeemer." Amen.
(Applause). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We'll go to item number four, the consent agenda.
Minutes of the regular council meeting held September 14, 2015. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held September 21, 2015. Minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held September 21, 2015.
Mr. Miller.
Move to sup- Consent Agenda is read.
Mr. Bukavak.
Second, please.
Roll call vote. There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion is carried. The consent agenda is accepted as read. Go to item number five, acknowledgment of the public pertaining to items on the agenda. There are, there's one item, item 7F. Mr. Law Director, I believe you want a change to the Crown Castle legislation?
They have to change, yes.
To add the emergency clause.
Right, that's correct. And that's for the reason that there is, the weather's coming, the climate weather's coming. We have an obligation to facilitate these contracts and this is passed, the construction will not occur without obligations.
Okay. So what you want to do is, you want us to add the emergency clause to this, correct?
It should be already on the ordinance.
It's already on it?
In the ordinance itself.
Yeah, okay. And then you want us to suspend rules so that we can pass this tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So this should be passed tonight, under suspension of rules, when we get to that agenda item. Anything else? Anyone else want to speak on any item related to tonight's agenda? Mr. Bukavak, I saw your hand up first.
You clarified my question, thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Kukuka.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just for clarification, I don't know if this has to be spelled out in the ordinance or not, but I know per our discussion that there was someone on council that wanted to know where the funds were going to be deposited or set up in, and I wanted to know.
It's into new legislation.
And where's it going?
It's going to the general fund, and then you guys will establish your line item once they go to the general fund.
Okay, and where is that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all, Mr. Ordinance? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item on tonight's agenda?
Just now.
If you will please go to the podium and state your name and address.
James R. Posegna, 420 Candy Lane, Amherst, Ohio.
Yes, Mr. Posegna. And which item do you want to speak on tonight?
I don't know which item it is. It's about the tax on gambling.
Okay. So on the changes to the finance legis- legislation that has to do with finances?
Can I speak on it?
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor Davis, City Councilman, other officials in the city of Amherst. I'm here to represent VFW American Legion and Fraternal Order of the Eagles. We are opposed to this tax, and I hope the city council will vote this tax down. For a few examples, people have already heard about this tax, and they said they'll quit gambling. They will not pay the $2.00 in some sense or $3.00 or whatever it is on $200. They'll go to the casino. This tax, maybe the city needs it, maybe they don't. But the people in this city, and a lot of you people sitting in this room right now, do not realize and do not understand the things that the fraternal orders of this community have done for this community. For example, two weeks ago, VFW cooked a meal for 85 high school football players and coaching staff. A week and a half later, they cooked a meal for the varsity volleyball team and give the JV volleyball team and the freshman volleyball team gift backs. The whole total cost was over $400. You have a fraternal organization, you have a police cruiser that drives around, it has a special infrared light on it. This light was over $4,000. Fraternal Order of the Eagles paid for this light, no cost to the city. Fraternal organizations in this community do more for this community than people realize. Maybe that's our fault, because maybe we don't go blowing our horns about it, but we're happy. And if you do this tax, people quit gambling. We will not be able to do, continue doing the things that we do. You're not only hurting the community, you're hurting the school kids. We have donated, the fraternal organizations in this town have donated money to kids, special kids, going to Spain for soccer. The junior high kid, he had to raise his money to go to this, but to fraternal organizations. But to three of us, we paid this kid's way, no cost to the parents. We didn't ask for nothing back. But we don't want to be taxed. Once you start taxing this money, we're not going to be able to do these things for the kids. And I've heard, yes, it's state mandatory? No, it's not state mandatory. I checked with the lawyers for the VFW in Columbus over the weekend. Natural, Columbus did make a revised code to one document, giving the cities the right to do this. But the only city doing this, as far as anybody knows in the whole state of Ohio, is Amherst. No other cities come up with this, to do this. So I plead, we would really like the people to really not vote this agenda. But if you're going to take away from the community and the school kids, you have three police officers, Sergeant Perez and two other police officers, that have dress uniforms for going to funerals for fallen police officers or other functions. These uniforms were over 900 bucks a piece. The fraternal organizations in this town paid for that. Didn't ask for nothing from the cities for any of this. But we did it because that's what we're supposed to do. And if you tax our members, you're not going to be able to do this, no more. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Posegna. Is there anyone who would like to speak, anyone else who'd like to speak on any, yes, would you please come to the podium and state your name and address?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor of the Amherst community, my name is Clark Brunner. I live at 916 Shingalong Drive in Amherst. Back in January, I went to Toledo, Ohio, football tournament. We started looking for American Legion's. There's three there. They have the same super thing going on. There's not one American Legion open. All three of them are closed permanently. Because anybody that lives in this community knows her main money is the gambling. And I don't remember the name of them, but it's these x-ray visions that you have in the fire department. They reflect $4,000 spent on that from us. So you better stop and think of the consequences, because although I think it's a $200 limit, think about the guy that go down and dropped $100, he gets nothing. It's all out of second figure.
Mr. Treasurer, would you care to comment?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of things about this. The new ordinances that the city is passing is in response to new state codes, new state statutes that the state hasn't acted. The gambling language that the city follows is the same that the federal government follows. So how you file your federal return is what controls whether or not you would owe any city tax on gambling. I can tell you that there are minimum thresholds for gambling. For example, per IRS rules, if the type of gambling winnings are bingo, if you do not get a $1,200 per year threshold, you don't have to report that. Keynotes, 1,500, poker's 5,000. Please review, there's a publication you can review, it's number 3079, it's the IRS publication that deals with taxing gambling winnings. In our office, when we drafted the statute, it's the language that we received from the Ohio Municipal League. And so that's the same language that everybody around the state is supposed to get. I don't know where the other cities are in terms of preparing their ordinances for their cities. I know that we tried to get out in front of it and prepare something. And the idea that we had in mind was to keep it as close to how we were presently doing it as possible. And if there was any leadway, we err on the side of least restrictive or most like the present. Now, if other people have heard that this is not mandatory, then a lot of directors kindly offered to work with me to contact whoever we need to contact to make sure that this is not mandatory. But even the people that were preparing the materials for us, we were almost for a week. It was done so kicking and screaming, basically, because nobody likes this. We don't like this. So I want to be clear that there's no agenda on the part of the city to increase taxes.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Winarsky?
Real briefly, if I may, and thank you, Mr. Posegna. Thank you all, actually, for coming up here tonight. This evening, we're not going to vote to pass or shut this down. What we're going to do tonight is ask if we're going to give it another two weeks. That'll give us time, I think ideally, if you have information that contradicts the information that we have, we've got two weeks to get parties together and find out what the truth is, or how we go about achieving what I feel is a goal, you know, not beating up our fraternal organizations. So tonight, we don't vote to pass or deny this. We just vote, send it up there for another two weeks. I hope that's enough time that we can all get together and look at what, if there are opportunities for us to modify, or if we are under a state mandate. So is that an acceptable, well, that's what we're going to be doing tonight. So I hope that's acceptable. And please don't take my offer lightheartedly. I'm very sincere. If you have information that we can modify this, please, we're all very interested in finding out what that is and having, so to speak, your people talk to our people and get this figured out in the best interest of our fraternal organizations. And finally, you're 100% correct. We don't have a clue. Half the things you guys do for the city. I'll also add to your list, every flag that flies in the city was donated. Every flag that flies above a ball field in the city was donated by your organizations. I'm grateful, we're all very grateful for what you do. Even though we may not understand exactly what you're doing all the time, we could never replace you or thank you enough. And so let's work together and see what we can figure out over the next couple of weeks, please. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Bukavak and then Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, excuse me, I'd like to echo Mr. Winarsky's sentiments exactly, because I do try to be involved as much as I can in the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, and there's a lot of charitable contributions, and I understand that. And if there is any truth that we have, we've had conversations with the treasurer, I have just spoke for me again, if there's any way we cannot do this, I will not support it. We do not want to do this. My understanding is that we have to do it, and if it turns out to be something that's not the truth, then we'll do everything we can to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bukavak. Mr. Miller.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Once again, Mr. Posegna, Mr. Brunner, thanks for coming up here. I think you'd be surprised how many members that sit up here are actually members of, like myself, the Eagles, the Legion. And we appreciate, we see what you do, we see a lot of what you've come to. And I think that you have more advocates up here hoping, wishing, and if we're lucky legally, able to fight this with you. We don't want to see this done. It puts a burden on you, it puts a burden, a tax burden on those gambling. You're absolutely right. The winnings may be gambling, but what about the losses? I will happen to, hard to watch, but I'll watch people not win on some of the gambling, and it all sucks. And in the end, I think it allows for a win with what you do, what you do for the kids, for the city, for the community. So we will do our best. I believe many of us up here are behind you in this. And I've said from the beginning, the state has picked the wrong places to raise revenue. And they're doing it on the backs of the wrong people. They're doing it on the backs of people who are gambling for charity. They're doing it on the backs of people who are working hard for a living. And I think that this is just another step. The Municipal League, like Mr. Ramsey had stated, is really in our court, they want to see us continue to maintain local control over taxing and over what we do. But they also understand the full court press we're getting from the state, from Columbus. And I look forward to a pushback by local communities, by local governments, by local citizens, writing the state reps, writing the state senators and saying, listen, you know, you're going after the wrong revenue source. And I hope that Mr. Winarsky and Mr. Bukavak and the rest that have stated their support, I hope we have a chance to say no to any legislation that would do that. But as you all know, I'm sure, that ORC trumps us, and they are trumping us hard right now. They are putting that in writing, they're putting it in law, and I really don't think they care about us. I really don't. So I'll go out on paper saying that we are under attack, and we just need to push back. You know, we need to make sure that we let them know that this is unacceptable. So thank you for coming up. I'm sure many of you probably want to get up here, and you're more than welcome to, but we'd be glad to hear your arguments, your ideas, your thoughts. Please, if you have any lawyers, you have people that know, send them in the direction of our law director, Mr. McCour, and Mr. Ramsey. I think they're both working hard right now to do what's best for the city and what's best for its citizens. So with that, I thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the time. I yield it back to the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Any comments, any further comments on any item on tonight's agenda? Thank you all very much. And again, as everybody has stated, we need to have that information that you have, and please get that to the law director and Mr. Ramsey, and we will take a look at it. We've got the two weeks that we can make changes if it's permitted. So thank you very much. Okay, we will go to item six, ordinances and resolutions, first reading. Item 6A.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to solicit bids for the relining of sanitary sewer lines on portions of Lincoln Street and Sipple Avenue, and authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to award the contract for such work to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for professional services with Brahm Hall Engineering and surveying company relating to such improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Churen.
Would you suspend council rules on item 6A if it passes the first reading?
Mr. Janik.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend rules so that item A, 6A, can be passed on the first reading. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Are there any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It'll be ordinance O-15-25.
Item 6B.
An ordinance to increase appropriations and fund 204 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Churen.
Would you suspend council rules so 6B can pass on the first reading?
Mr. Miller.
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to suspend rules so that item 6B can be passed on the emergency. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell? Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Bukavak.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item 6B on tonight's agenda. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
It'll be ordinance O-15-26.
Go on to item 7A. An ordinance to adopt Charter 192 of the codified ordinance of the city of Amherst regarding municipal income tax. Oh. Mr. Winarsky.
Like to ask this come back to council for a third reading, two weeks from now.
Mr. Miller.
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to send item 7A to a third reading. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 7A goes on to the third reading. Item 7B.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 139 of the codified ordinances of the city of Amherst.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to take 7B on to the third reading.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to send item 7B on to the third reading. Mr. Janik.
So moved.
So do roll call.
We'll do roll call.
Okay. Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Item 7B is passed to the third reading. Item 7C.
An ordinance to repeal Chapter 197 of the codified ordinances of the city of Amherst regarding taxpayers' rights.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to take 7C on to the third reading.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to take item 7C on to the second reading. Third reading. Sorry, thanks. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 7C is passed to the third reading. Item 7D.
An ordinance to reflect that Chapter 191 of the codified ordinances of the city of Amherst is operative until January 1, 2016.
Mr. Janik.
Motion to move 7D on to the third reading.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to move item 7D on to the third reading. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
And item 7D is moved to the third reading. Item 7E.
An ordinance to extend the program for reimbursement of up to $500 of the cost of installing sanitary storm sewer backflow valves.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take 7E to the third reading.
Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to send item 7E to the third reading. Mr. Miller, you have comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the administration, Mayor Taylor, and the council for supporting this opportunity to relieve some of the burden to those citizens who are trying to stop sewage from coming back into their homes when we have once-in-a-decade rains that come through here. And I appreciate that, so thank you again.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
The motion is passed, and item 7E goes on to the third reading. 7F.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Amherst, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Crown Castle and GE East LLC for pole attachments of fiber optic cable and associated hardware and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Churen.
I move to suspend council rules so that this item can be passed on the first reading.
Second reading. On the second reading.
On the pardon, the second reading, yes. It's not something I'm used to saying.
We're all giving a [inaudible]. Mr. Miller.
Second, please. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to send item, or to suspend rule so 7F can be passed tonight on the second reading. Comments, Mr. Bukavak?
Thank you. Earlier in our meeting, we, it was mentioned about the clarification, I'd like to have clarification on the line item directing where that money is going. How is that going to happen?
What will happen is when the money is collected by the auditor, they'll put in the general fund, and then they'll determine what line item it will be. So it'll go in the general-
Who's going to make that determination?
Auditor.
The auditor.
We create that line item.
This is going to the-
It'll be in the 100 funds.
Okay. We had talked about previously about designating a specific fund, like you had mentioned.
That's, that was my question, you know, what happened?
And that's not in that line item. It's not in the ordinance, not correct.
Right.
It just says it's going to the general fund, the line item to be set by the auditor.
I'd like to have discussion on if, we initially talked about potentially park funds or some other specific item. Pardon?
Building and land maintenance, I think is what we talked about.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
By putting it in the general fund, we can use it, spin it anywhere.
Understood.
So we can, any department that would need that.
Understood.
So we can still use it for the parks. But this gives us a little more flexibility of where we want to use that money.
Gives that side of the room lots of flexibility, yeah.
We always like flexibility. We always like flexibility.
Yes, I understand. One more question, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or any further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukovac?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Mr. Van Truen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. And Mr. Van Truen?
I'll second.
Motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Bukovac?
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Of the ordinance fifteen dash twenty-seven.
The next item is item eight, ordinances and resolutions, the third reading, there are none. The next item is item nine, miscellaneous and acknowledgement of the public. Mr. Janik?
Yes, for those of you that don't know, young Jacob Heverling, age nine, received a heart transplant a few weeks ago, and they are sponsoring at Park Lanes Bowling Alley Saturday, October tenth, a benefit for Jacob to help him raise funds or money his family to alleviate some of the medical bills. So the life flight alone was twenty-three thousand dollars. So on top of that, there were pre-surgery, post-surgery, and more appointments that he needs to go to in Pittsburgh. So any help would be appreciated. I do have flyers up here. Again, that's gonna go, the event will go from noon to nine PM at Park Lanes. The cost is forty dollars per lane for one hour for four people, that includes shoe rental as well. And again, all proceeds will go to Jacob Heverling and his family to cover those medical expenses. There is information on the bottom of the flyer relating to straight donations to Fifth Third Bank if you cannot make the event. So thank you for considering supporting Jacob and the Heverling family.
Thank you. Mr. Bukovac?
Thank you. Today, the Amherst Police Department coordinated with other Raine County Emergency Services and the school system had a intruder shootout shooter drill, so for creature safety. Having been down there today and witnessing the whole exercise, it was quite the undertaking. And we in Amherst should be very proud of the fact that we're being very proactive to making sure that the safety is being thought of in advance for the kids in the school system. And I think we're, we have a lot to be proud of in the city, and they did a great job. And a special hats off to Lieutenant McCroskey, who was the main organizer of the exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bukovac. Go on to item ten, agenda requests and committee meeting schedules. The first meeting is, oh, we gotta read your list.
You're gonna read your list. Um, yes. Mr. Miller, do you have the agendas that I gave you?
Yes.
Could you just cast that down?
I can do that.
Oh, that's okay, I'm gonna go grab, I'll just come.
I have two. I have an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the City of Lorraine for water service and declaring an emergency. That will be going to utilities, and that will be agenda item A dash fifteen dash forty-four. The second is for finance, it's A dash fifteen dash forty-five. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to bid an award for sludge disposal services for the Water Pollution Control Center for two thousand sixteen and seventeen, declaring an emergency, and that is complete.
Okay, thank you. The first committee meeting we have is finance, and that's A fifteen dash forty-five. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Services Director to bid an award for sledge disposal services for the Water Pollution Control Center for two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, and declaring an emergency, and I will call that for seven ten.
On October fifth?
Yes, next Monday. Next, building and lands, Mr. Winarski?
Nothing at this time.
Streets, Mr. Bukovac?
No items, please cancel.
And we have Community Development Vice Chair, Mr. Van Truen?
No items, please cancel.
Executive Committee, the Vice Chairs, myself, we have no items, we will cancel that meeting. Ordinance, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item for ordinance, that is the tabled amendment, or excuse me, the tabled item A fifteen dash forty-three, amending the sign ordinance. I'd like to call that for seven oh five.
Okay. Is that complete?
That completes ordinance, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and utilities, Mr. Miller?
And we'll move right into that. We have one item, Madam Chair, and that is utilities, agenda item A dash fifteen dash forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the City of Lorraine for water service and declaring an emergency. I'd like to call that as well on October fifth for seven o'clock, as we have somebody coming in to speak. Mr. McCour will be in to speak on behalf of this ordinance.
Thank you.
That is it?
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Recycle, Mr. Janik?
No items, Madam Chair, please cancel.
Technology, Mr. Bukovac?
Technology has no items, please cancel.
Police and Fire, Mr. Van Truen?
No items.
Annexation, Mr. Bukovac?
I'm sorry?
Annexation.
Uh, no items, please cancel.
That is complete. We'll go on to item eleven, reports of the administration. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ramsey?
The August reports have been distributed, and a report.
Mr. Kukka?
Uh, no reports this evening, Mayor.
Mr. McCour?
No reports, Mayor.
Mr. Casolo?
Just want to speak one more second about the event that Mr. Bukovac spoke about, the active shooter bill.